Meeting's ordered. Now that the president has ordered, this is the meeting of the Board of Commissioners for the Town of Pittsburgh from Monday, March 27, 2017. And as is our custom, we'll begin our meeting within a moment. We have tonight with us two members of Tribe 93, working on Jatten Award. Hunter Quinlan is with us, who's working on the last merit badge for the 22, 23 that is required for his equal gap. Is that right? And Joshua Crutchfield is also with us and he's working towards that as well. So I've asked the young men if they would like to come and lead us in the pledge meeting.
Please join me in the pledge meeting. The pledge is to declare the United States of America and to declare our borders, our nation, under God, indivisible, with the reprieve of the United States of America.
You have your agenda before you, and are there any changes to be made to the agenda, modifications or revisions?
Madam Mayor, I would like to possibly move item number three to meet this one. It's just a merit case.
With the movement of item number three off the consent agenda to new business, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Moved by Michael Piakos, seconded by Jay Farrell. Those who favor please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed. Motion carries, and then we then have amended our regular agenda in that manner. So may I have a motion to approve the format of the regular agenda? Come in. Moved by Beth Wilson Foley, seconded by Michael Piakos. Those who favor please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed. Thank you. That's the next item on our agenda is the public hearing for the Jatten Park Master Plan. Additional elements, the first four additional elements. And we have a sign up sheet. First, we need a motion to go into public hearing. Second. Moved by Michael Piakos, seconded by Beth Wilson Foley. Those who favor please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed. We do have the public hearing sign up sheet, and if I may make one clarification, Jav Robertson, Robertson, he's signed up on the public expression speakers list. Would you wish to speak to the matter of the additional elements?
John Bonn.
Okay. Either one, whichever.
Oh, we're not doing citizens concerned beforehand?
It does follow on the agendas next.
After the public hearing?
After the public hearing.
Y'all gonna be up here to let it square?
Well, if Mr. Robertson wishes to speak on the matter of the additional elements, we could.
I might put mine down for the for the citizen's side.
Okay. How does the board feel about taking Billy Clark and Billy Hughes, who are signed up to be public expression speakers prior to the public hearing? No, that would be.
We need to then go out of public hearing.
Yes, we do. Would you make that motion, John?
I move that we close the public hearing to reopen it after public comments.
Second. Moved by John Bonn, seconded by Beth Wilson Foley. Those who favor please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed. So we're out of public hearing and into citizen matters on the regular meeting agenda. We have Billy Clark first on the agenda to speak. If you'd come to the microphone and give your name and address, that would be very helpful.
I'm Billy Clark. I live east of town here at 1664 East. I just recently had a back operation, as you can probably tell if I walked up here. The doctor told me to walk the federal mountain. We have sidewalks nearly to my property. I could use a sidewalk to walk uptown, and I've noticed a lot of other people who elderly people and people who are partially handicapped, they have the same problem. If we had benches, long as sidewalks, to take a rest in our walk, it would be it would be helpful. And I've thought about it for some time, and I started from up here and proposed it. And maybe the merchants could pay for them and use them for advertisement. They could be landscaping, put flowers around it. When I get able, I'd be glad to do my part or something like that, but it would be a big help to the elderly people, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy Clark. And the last speaker then would be Billy Hughes.
Billy Hughes, two fifty, West Cornwall Street. I just got a real quick question. I see y'all got the devil here, so it's gonna take all night long to talk to them. As y'all know, I've been here 23 years. I've been alone in the town of Pittsburgh money every year. What I mean is, I've been paying my taxes. Mr. Crutchfield, he don't get the signal. I have a lot of it. Got my own water and sewer, you know, got all that. I just wanna know who's gonna manage my money? All right? Y'all gonna listen to, you know, you gonna listen to the old people like me, who's, you know, kids moved away, can't get a job, you know, wait for me to die so they can sell it to the devil, you know? Or you gonna wait for the people that came from the devil land and, you know, made 10 times of their investment, now they move out here to tell me what the hell to do, you know? Or you gonna listen to the young couple? They couldn't afford to live in cities, and now they're out here and they wanna have parks, schools, cities, you know, all that. They can't afford it. We can't afford it. Okay? One man can't afford it. Or are you gonna listen to Big Bird and the Muppets? You know? You know Big Bird, who's the guy that was the lawyer who got, you know, bailed on them? Brave Bear, you know him? He's just an insulting. Or you got King Lucifer. You know, it's the oddest man in the world. You gonna listen to them, or you gonna listen to me? I don't give a shit. I'm going to call our little cars.
We have a simple tone in our mouths here when we speak.
I know, I'm over it. Bye.
Now we'll proceed to go into public hearing. Is there another motion to go into public hearing? Come in. Moved by Beth Wilson Foley, seconded by Michael Piakos. Those who favor please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed. Our public hearing tonight is on the first additional element, first section of additional elements, and will be guided initially by our planner, Jeff Jones.
So we've already held one public hearing on first additional elements. So we're actually holding the public hearing, not only on the first additional elements, that would be general provisions, phasing, signage, lighting, and parking and loading, we're also holding a public hearing on, as the staff report indicated, on open space, landscaping, tree protection, and stormwater. With an abundance of caution, the applicant has requested that the public hearing for the first four elements that you may have action on later tonight be reopened for public hearing. That has been advertised as such. So you could entertain comments from the public on any of those nine elements of what we have under consideration. Instead of going over what we held a public hearing on back in December, what I'm focusing on, I see some confusion on the board. Please, please give me feedback before I start.
The agenda indicated we're having a public hearing on those items.
I understand.
Did not indicate that the four other items which were mentioned as items for action also to be heard at the public hearing.
Right. That was, it was a miscommunication between the applicant and me, and that, it has been advertised as such. So we have legally advertised for that. People may be here to speak on those elements. That's why I'm giving you the preference of what we're discussing right now. It's in staff's opinion that we've already held the public hearing on those elements. We legally advertise for those outside of the general provisions and definitions. We have entertained the applicant's caution, and we have advertised for that. We are going to move forward with those. I'm going to go over the open space, the landscaping, and the tree protection comments that I've generated to you all. You've heard from the committee. You heard from the committee on these four elements, including stormwater, and they have given you their recommendations. All that I'm speaking on tonight has been given to you in your packets. So you will have all the comments that we have received from citizens, from various other entities, from staff, including myself, and other staff town engineers on these four elements, stormwater. And also received county comments that relate to all the elements, but they may want to speak on some that are specific to tonight's public hearing. These comments were made available to you all last week in your packet. They have been made available to the applicant. My comments, Fred's comments, committee's comments were public record. What we're here tonight to do is to hear from the public on these elements. You may be asked, we will go through that agenda item of having action on four of these elements later, later tonight. So what we will go over is open space and some of the things that I came up with for discussion with the applicant. The way we're gonna do tonight is how we did it in December on the first four elements the first time around. So you're gonna hear from staff, you're gonna hear from the public, and you should hear from the applicant. And then we would be asking you all to make a formal, make a recommendation that it go to the planning board for formal recommendation from those folks. That'll get a little confusing when we get to that point, because they've already made a formal recommendation on four of the elements already. All right. So diving into the open space elements. I tended to look at, open space was relatively brief in the element. It kinda was a regurgitation of what we had seen in the master plan, giving us some details on how much acreage would be in open space, and then how much would, and what would qualify as open space, what would qualify as areas of open space in the park and town. What I wanted to hear, what I anticipate coming back from the applicant, is we understand that open space is provided for, and you're going to be doing different types of open space. I've seen ordinances, and I've included some language from previous ordinances that I've worked with, that describe open space types, plazas, and parks, and top lots. Those are just general, if it's going to be called an open space category, an open space plaza, these are the parameters that would qualify that as an open space plaza. Those are things that I think with the ordinance type language that we would have in the elements, remember, these are ordinances that govern development. We've already established how much open space is going to be provided by Jatten Park. What we need to know is how the open space is going to look. And you may hear from the applicant that a lot of that detail is in the small area plan, but I think for an ordinance, there can be some ordinance type language as to what open space should look like. So those are some things that the staff looked at for them to comment back on. Sorry, I have some notes here. The payment in lieu section should be an option, only if the town of Pittsburgh agreed to such arrangements. The language should reflect that the town has final determination of payment in lieu. That would mirror a recommendation from the committee. There's some tree coverage areas that are in the tree protection element that indicate the tree coverage area, tree protection, that open space would be part of setbacks and parking lot requirements. I'm unsure how that is open space, and the applicant needs to let us understand how things that you would normally get through development qualifies as open space. Because again, I'm asking for what is open space, define what open space is in the ordinance, in the element, and then we can go to that and look to see, yes, that is open space. Again, looking towards the open space and towards this document, as a reviewer of development, how would that open space look on future plans? You can remember back to the committee, and some of the things that they, a couple of recommendations that they put forth was to, committee recommended that each small area plan specify open space and including a running total of open space throughout Jatten Park to date in two categories, one be regulated open space and non-regulated open space. And then that payment in lieu must be approved by the town, payment in lieu, and not by the developer would be able to, to do unilaterally. We move to tree protection. Oh, I'm sorry. I think I'm confusing myself. I'm talking about, oh, Brian, you moved the screen on me. Sorry. Brian's confusing. All right. Here we go. We moved to tree protection. The tree protection element should, as I stated early on to the applicant, should complement our UDO that's under review now. I think the applicant, through their presentations to the committee, has indicated, at least publicly, that that's some application that they're going in. They told me as much. So my comment was, we should complement the UDO draft in tree protection. If you read the element, it was more of a tree provisions or planting provision of trees, and not as much of keeping what was currently on there, or trying to keep what's on there. Even our draft UDO goes through a hierarchy of ways you can remove trees, but the idea is that you can keep trees where trees should be kept, and not clear cut the property to the town. So that would be something that we would be looking for the applicant to respond on. Back to the committee, committee recommended that town commissioners have Jatten Park adopt provisions of the draft UDO, so that was some of the same language that staff had. And then have that methodology of percentage of current tree coverage on the parcel that's being developed to correlate with a tree save percentage of that, and then go through a process of trying to keep those trees. And then if they're neat, if those trees are in developable areas, or can't be saved for whatever reason, going through a hierarchy of how you can replace those trees, move those trees elsewhere, so coming up with some sort of methodology for that. Moving over to landscape element, staff encourages the use of existing trees and landscaping to meet any requirements set forth in the element. When tree, existing tree coverage is to be preserved, a detailed report will come back to staff, the reviewers of the, of the project, that we would be able to ascertain from that report what is being kept and what's not being kept. Landscaping element talks about this type of reporting, but it doesn't really specify how that report's gonna be used. So I would like to have some details in the report or on a plan that shows this is what we're keeping, and these trees qualify for the landscaping that is, that is called for in the landscaping element to plant or qualify for this development. So that was one of the things that we looked at there. The committee looked at recommending that the town commissioners, again, adopt that tree protection, and, let's see, committee looked at, recommended that a sentence be added to the element that states that the North Carolina Complete Streets Planning Design Islands be applied, so far as they apply to landscaping adjacent to streets and roadways. Committee also recommended that the resource section be added to the additional elements that this section include the following, something that would speak to polymer plants, where to buy native plants, North Carolina wildflowers, native plants, statements that encourage consulting these, using these resources when developing specific landscaping plans. Stormwater, Fred is here, and if you have any questions after the presentation, we can kinda go over those. But stormwater, I'm sure Fred has got his comments on stormwater, and it's looking like what we're trying to do is not only Jatten Park wide, but townwide, come up with some new stormwater language that would utilize existing forests or existing stands of trees that would help with stormwater, so instead of building devices. And Fred can get more into that if there's questions on that. The committee recommended that Jatten Park be asked to explain why they decided not to use the rational method. Fred could explain that to the board if we needed to. And in the best management practice in stormwater element in the master plan, is repeated in the stormwater additional elements on page 40, except for item five. Standards specified above are established as minimum standards. The committee is recommending that item five be included in the additional elements as well. They thought, well, if you've copied and pasted this part of the master plan into the stormwater element, they found it curious why you left that one number out. So that would be something that we would be asking the applicant to respond back on. That is my overview of these elements, open space, tree protection, landscaping, and stormwater. Again, you're gonna be able to hear comments from all these elements that we have before us tonight. And staff is here, we can answer any questions that you might like, that you might want to hear from, hear from the public.
Would the board like to hear from the public before the hearing, from Fred, on stormwater, or was that part of the presentation?
I think, Fred, unless I didn't cover something that you need to, I think that's the, that's the generalization of the change.
The draft engineering report we have in our package is basically his recommendation.
That's right. That's his comments.
All right.
Jeff, a few questions.
Yeah.
You mentioned this TCA tree cover areas and setbacks and parking lots are not qualified as open space.
Well, yeah.
Do you, when you say setback, now I think of a building setback as something I can still put a parking lot in.
Right.
So are you thinking setback means setback in your daily perimeter buffer, so to speak, like a street yard? Do you suggest that try and qualify as that?
The street yard, I'm asking for a little bit more definition of what that is. I think the street yard might be something that we would think about qualifying as open space. That area that parking lots and parking lot islands are in, and that 30 feet back from the property line that the development functions in, I'm not sure that is open space, so that's why I'm asking for those definitions of open space. If one of those defined open space areas or categories is this perimeter buffer or this street landscape area. Yeah. If that can be defined with some parameters of what that is, so it's not like two feet wide and 30 feet long, and someone calls that open space, that's really not open space. But if it's a green area that's of some size, I don't even know what that would be, 30 feet wide, about 50 feet or so, that might be something we would look at as open space as a perfect guess.
Any other questions for Jeff Jones from there? And now we'll begin hearing from members of the public, Renee Jones, who was signed up first to speak on Jatten County.
Good evening, Mayor and town commissioners. Thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to speak tonight. Before I begin, I do want to clarify, our, the information that we sent to you includes all the elements, or at least elements that are not on the agenda tonight, is it appropriate for us to go ahead and speak to those?
As the board feels that the last four have not yet been reported out of the committee yet, would you like to hear the comprehensive report from the county, or just have the ones that are under consideration?
I would prefer to stay focused on what we're hearing from the public.
Other thoughts? Mr. Piakos says that you favor sticking with the elements that are under consideration. Okay. We'll be getting nods. Thank you.
So the Jatten County Board of Commissioners requested that county staff attend the additional elements meetings related to affordable housing, open space, phasing, and public facilities. Our staff did attend when they could, or listened to the recordings of those meetings. They reviewed the plans submitted by the developer, and they developed the following recommendations that were subsequently approved by our Board of Commissioners, and realize, of course, the town is dealing with many issues, and this is viewed through accounting lens. So this is our perspective. I won't speak to affordable housing. I assume there'll be a public hearing later during that. So I will speak to open space. The county recommends that Jatten Park allow for flexibility in planning trails with special regard for the connection of their trails to future county trails. We will be developing a Parks and Recreation Master Plan in the upcoming year, and we would like to see connectivity between that. And we strongly support the concept that Jatten Park's trails are open to the public. With regard to the phasing element, which I assume I can speak to since that was a previous public hearing, the county recommends that Jatten Park present a multi-phase, at least five-year plan, updated yearly for development phases, so that the county can anticipate and plan for service demands in our upcoming budget. As you know, the county and town cooperate in providing a number of services. Those that are most impacted by Jatten Park include schools, building and fire inspections, sedimentation and erosion control, and public safety. I assume there will be a public hearing later on with public facilities. And transportation will be later as well. So the only other request I would address is, I request that the sedimentation and erosion control ordinance and rules not be part of the regulations that are held constant throughout the duration of the project. Currently, the only activities that are exempt from solar, solar erosion and sedimentation control are agriculture, civil culture, mining, state authority, and emergency operations. No mechanism exists within the ordinance to grandfather specific projects by date or by any other measure. Furthermore, in order to remain a delegated local program, the county has an obligation to adopt any to adopt any revisions made to the Sedimentation Pollution Control Act and maintain standards that are at least as stringent as state standards. If those standards are updated, the county would also be required to revise its ordinance in order to remain delegated, and in order to continue to administer the town's ordinance, the town would have to also adopt those revisions. And in addition, and finally, it's important, that the town's ordinance and the county's ordinance are the same, essentially the same, for purposes of administration by county staff. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Ms. Pascal, will you entertain questions?
Absolutely.
I apologize, but I'm having a little bit of challenge grasping that last observation, that last comment. And I'm wondering specifically the second, excuse me, the first and second sentences, if you can maybe try to put that in this language for me.
So it's definitely not my area of expertise. About 10 years ago, the county received delegation from the state to administer sedimentation and erosion control. I believe it's been a couple of years that we also began administering the town's program. In order to do that, the town has to adopt an ordinance, and we requested in the town, granted our request, that your ordinance look very much like our ordinance, because otherwise it's very confusing to staff to have to administer multiple ordinances. So what we're requesting is, I know the developer has requested that rules stay as they are today. And what we are requesting is that the sedimentation and erosion control ordinance by the town not be put under those rules that stay constant today, because they have to change if the state law changes, or if the county and the town were to agree to changes. We would like that flexibility in the future. Does that make better sense?
Thank you very much. Are there any more questions for Renee Parker? Thank you. Next person signed up is Elaine Kiyoko.
I am Elaine Kiyoko, Executive Director and Hall River Keeper with the Hall River Assembly. So the plan development ordinance requires protection of critical environmental resources. So I'd like to just discuss what some of those are as relates to the open space additional elements. So first of all, stream buffers. And actually, let me back up a little bit here. So the plan development ordinance talks about these critical environmental resources being protected, and also talks about anything approved of the plan development district be, have higher standards in exchange for this flexibility that being given. So I just want to say that at the outset. So with stream buffers, the 100-foot buffers on perennials, 50-foot buffers on intermittent streams, this is, you know, this is adequate. A lot of jurisdictions do, but it does not include protection of ephemeral streams. And if you don't protect ephemeral streams, they'll be bulldozed. And stormwater controls will have to be built to deal with that flow of water. But it's so much better to let nature control the flow of water through ephemeral streams, natural ephemeral streams. And Chatham County has 30-foot buffers on ephemeral streams, and we think Chatham Park should be held to at least as high a standard as the county that it's located in. Same with wetlands. Wetlands are protected under state and federal law, but if you don't protect the land around them, they typically become very degraded, if not destroyed, by mud entering the wetlands during construction. So again, Chatham County has 50-foot buffers around wetlands that we would recommend. Floodplains, there's simply, I don't think there's been enough mapping, at least I haven't seen it to date. But the 100-year floodplain is indeed, you know, the no-build zone, but I don't think this takes into account enough vision for the future, where we may be seeing much larger storms. We already have been seeing larger storms, so what are those floodplains going to look like? I just think more needs to be more detail about this. Steep slopes, steep slopes are connected to the Sedimentation Erosion Control Ordinance that you just heard about, but we have not been given information about steep slopes in Chatham Park. And there is a 350-foot elevation change within Chatham Park's land. So we're talking about some very steep slopes in some parts of it that should be examined a little more thoroughly. We will go back. Again, Chatham Park should be held to the 2,000-foot Hall River buffer that was in Pittsboro's Land Use Plan. This would be so much more protection of water quality and wildlife habitat. And of course, the lower Hall River State Natural Area, which is such a treasure for this county, that 2,000 feet would much better match what Chatham County protects along the other side through very, very low-density housing, five-acre limits per house. Significant natural heritage areas, there are several in the Chatham Park land that are very special places. Pittsboro Wilderness Area, Hall River Leveys and Bluffs, the Robeson Creek Ravine, and some others. And under the current plan, these will just be fragmented. They will no longer be natural heritage areas. So if you add up all this acreage that we're talking about, and you can go on our website and look at more specifically if you'd like to see acreage per each one of these issues that I brought up, but if you add them all up, it comes up to 2,895 acres, which is closer to 40% open space, we'll call it, and we're calling that protection of critical resources should count and be a major focus of open space. The stormwater element, additional element, is just inadequate. Two pages for stormwater is, you know, is to my mind just completely inadequate, especially when compared to signage, which I don't know, goes on for 30 or more pages. Stormwater is so critical, and we just don't have enough detail in it. Under the conditions set by U.S. Fish and Wildlife, they're supposed to be showing a no change in stormwater leaving that land. It's an incredibly dense development. I don't think they give us enough information on how to do that. We're very concerned about the omission of this .5 that was in the master plan, Section 3, Number 2. So if you look at the original master plan, .5 under stormwater says standards specified above are established as minimum standards. They took that sentence out in the additional elements. I think you want to put that back in, because otherwise it's not really allowing you to require these higher standards that you might want to require. So I hope, I hope you would say these stormwater standards they're proposing are minimums. It's kind of a little legal question there, what it would mean if you took it out, but I would suggest you put it back in. The water quality design storm standard, again, it's, you know, it's as good as Pittsboro's, but Chatham County requires a higher standard for a one-year, one-hour storm that's captured and drawn down over a longer period of time. And so you're going to get more infiltration into groundwater with that standard. And the peak flow attenuation standard, which controls this runoff from the built-upon areas, again, is less than what Chatham County requires. And as I point out, I know you're reading along here, but if you remember the December 2015 flood, I believe it was December 23rd, it was right before Christmas. I've lived in this area for over 40 years, 40 years, not four. I've never seen anything like that. So new building just in downtown Pittsburgh caused flooding on creeks, out of their banks, you know, into people's yards, closing roads, that was really quite amazing to see. And I believe we're going to see more of that. So I think we want better stormwater management in a place that's going to be so very dense. So slowing down, slowing down the water, it's going to mean a lot more best management practice, you know, stormwater design, engineered stormwater design, or a lot more natural area where the forests are preserved. And so that gets me to this last point about tree protection, which, you know, to my reading would allow clearing of up to 90%, perhaps even 100, because you could replant under the way that it's described, of this forest that's out there right now, 7,000-plus acres of forest. So this is not, you know, I won't get into, obviously, this is not really what you call tree protection. But if these recommendations about open space and saving more natural area, protecting stream buffers, steep slopes, et cetera, if this was done, you'd have so much more forest left, which, you know, your planner just said to some extent as well, that would control stormwater in its natural way. You know, if you stand in the forest when it's raining even very hard, there basically is not stormwater runoff. You just eventually start seeing water trickling into those ephemeral streams that are the headwaters, and on it goes. So saving these forests, I just, I hope you can just picture this with me, but, you know, we're talking about better air quality for everybody, not just Chatham Park, but the entire surrounding area, really the whole Triangle region would benefit from better air quality, less sediment erosion, and better water quality in the Hall River and Jordan Lake. Of course, this onsite stormwater management of the forest provides more habitat for these plants and wildlife that it's their home right now. And even less noise and less light pollution when you have more forest. So saving more of that forest, we do all those things and provide resilience in this coming world where climate change is the wild card. We don't really know what that impact's going to look like. Talking about the development that's pretty far out into the future. So thank you for hearing my comments.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? That's fine, we can get them. Next speaker, signed up is Debbie Tenell.
I'm pretty short.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Debbie Tenell. I'm at 282 Moore Mountain Road. You know, when I heard Mr. Rolle say, I'm going to quote a little things here, "You don't get credit for doing what's required, so we're stepping away past the requirements here." And then when I heard about Mr. Smith saying, "We want this to be an exemplary project, and we're going to make sure it will be," I was hopeful when I heard those comments. And then Mr. Rolle continued on, "We have our playbook and will adapt as needed. We don't play every position, we just assemble the players and handle different aspects." I thought leadership with delegation, this sounds like it could work, work with Pittsboro. The town of Pittsboro made it clear that conservation must be a key element of the master plan community under the Plan Development District Ordinance. And the town said, and I'll quote, "In return for greater flexibility, plan developments in this district are expected to deliver communities of exceptional design, character and quality to preserve critical environmental resources and provide open space amenities." It sounded to me like the town was given the playbook and you're part of the team. The neighbors of Chatham Park, also team members, desire Chatham Park and Pittsboro to step beyond state and local requirements and produce a development for the entire ecosystem. That's all its residents, human, animal, plants, water, air, and sky. Neighbors are drinking from the Hall River, Jordan Lake and its watershed. Astronomers are studying the night sky. Bobcat, bald eagles, turtles, plants, they all live here. We want our leaders to keep the entire ecosystem a priority. We must go beyond the requirements of planning and care for all of our residents, those that are here now and those to come. And for many people, and this area is really an important part of the role, character of Pittsboro and Chatham, and to some, it's a sacred area as well. And yet, under the leadership of Mr. Smith and Mr. Rolle, Chatham Park has not adapted as needed. Chatham Park should conform to the 2,000-foot river buffer as stated in the 2012 Pittsboro Land Use Plan. This would also help protect the neighbor of the lower Hall River State Natural Area, Jordan Lake's drinking waters, Hall's drinking waters, and the Cape Fear Shiner. What does it say when the team member, you as Pittsboro, the land use plan is disregarded? And that's a pretty big part of your land use plan. Even though the Southwest Shore Conservation Assessment was researched by team members, and here's the list of the team members. Army Corps of Engineers, Chatham County Historical Society, North Carolina Department of the Environment and Natural Resources, North Carolina Division of the Parks and Recreation, North Carolina Natural Heritage Program, North Carolina State University, Chatham County Planning Department, Hall River Assembly, Pittsboro Planning Department, Robeson Creek Rope Watershed Council, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission, and this was all compiled by the Triangle Land Conservancy and UNC Chapel Hill Center for Sustainable Community Design. Even so, we have not seen in these elements an adoption for all of these members that submitted this, this conservation assessment. And what we would really would like to see is things that were suggested, such as continuous wildlife corridors, which is not shown. This is piecemeal, or the open space is not lined up so that the wildlife has places to go. So paving paradise and putting up impervious parking lots where stormwater and rains don't have a place to go, it's not, that's not exceptional. The cutting down of the 90% of the existing tree coverage is not acceptable and not exceptional. And it will result in potential areas of flooding and the steep slope erosion. And you might remember, remember that video that was the promo video where it was this aerial shot that was coming down over trees and over the river? A lot of that is going to be gone. It's going to be just gone. So Chatham Park has made presentations a number of times mentioning the Southwest Shore's Conservation Assessment and how they plan to use it, but it is not included in these additional elements. We would not call these elements exceptional nor adapting as needed to the conservation required by Pittsboro and by the people of Chatham County. In closing, the adoption of the International Dark Sky Association Modeling Lighting Ordinance to promote spillover and light and glare control should be in all sections of Chatham Park and the villages in 7.1. And that would be exceptional. And then we would be exceptional. And then we would be setting the pace. And so thank you for this opportunity. I'm representing a number of residents, and I'm a resident, I'm just really imploring you to take care of this and be good stores, because I'm a resident, I'm not just a property owner. Thank you.
Debbie Tenell, if you have a copy, if you do it to the town for a change. Randy Roper?
Madam Mayor, if we're just limited to comments on those items, the minimums of general comments, I'll withdraw. I'll wait for the next vote.
Okay, thank you. Jasmine Hyatt?
Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jasmine Hyatt. I live at 248 Vineham Church Road. I primarily went to, against the comments of Elaine Kiyoko and Diane and Debbie Tenell before me, whose comments were better prepared than mine. I just want to add for my part that I have lived in the Triangle since 2001 and in Chatham County for the past year and from the beginning of my time in this region. This county has been precious to me for its rich wilderness and agricultural lands to me and everyone else I know. It has been, and some of the land that is supposed to be developed by Chatham Park, I have read is one of the Triangle, is the Triangle last remaining unfragmented wilderness. And the importance of the unfragmented part is that that is what protects it as wilderness. That is what protects the environmentally sensitive land that is home to important native plant and animal species that will be lost if their habitat is destroyed. native plant and animal species that will be lost if their habitat is destroyed or chopped up into pieces. Cutting down trees and replanting, even if native trees are used for replanting, will not maintain the ecological networks that are already established here. Tree protection areas should mean maintaining the existing tree cover, not cutting and replanting, especially along the Hall River. I'm thinking especially of the Phase 1 development, the North Village, on the south side of the Hall River. I have read the entire additional elements, and it is my strong feeling that this is not a forward-thinking 21st century development, but it's deeply 20th century with the same old, same old style of scraping and paving and maintaining the bare minimum of existing landscape. I know that there are truly forward-thinking developments around the world that put the fragility and critical importance of our natural resources front and center to every design decision that is made. And if we are going to have a major development in Chatham County, I believe that it needs to be modeled on projects such as those. And finally, on the matter of payment in lieu, I believe that the town should not grant payment in lieu of open space under any circumstances. There is no amount of payment that can compensate for the loss of native wilderness. Thank you.
Thank you, Jasmine Hyatt. Our next speaker is Liz Collington.
My name is Liz Collington, and I live at 390 Rocky Hills Road, Pittsboro ETJ. I'm also submitting written comments, because it would take fortune long to lay out just the major problems with the stormwater, open space, tree, and landscaping elements, especially since I thought you were going to cut me off after three minutes. I would encourage anyone else who is submitting written comments to also email them directly to the board members unless you've been handing out copies. They'll see them sooner that way. Once again, I have to point out that the introduction to the elements says that only the master plan and the additional elements would apply to Chatham Park, not our future UDO, Unified Development Orders. But that is not what the master plan says. Once a UDO is passed, things that currently default in the master plan to our current zoning ordinance, which is the town's role in approving site subdivision plans, would simply vanish into the mayor, because once the UDO is passed, then the current zoning ordinance will be repealed. And so none of that, the best of my interpretation of all this, would apply to Chatham Park, only the master plan and the additional elements. That needs to be changed to ensure that the town will actually have all the development approval that you're assuming going forward. Even with that change, the stormwater element would still need to incorporate some of the language from the town's ordinance regarding the watershed overlay district to ensure that Chatham Park doesn't exceed the maximum of 70 percent built or paved area, not averaged out over the entire 7,000-plus acres, but within specific sites, because this is a standard that's supposed to apply to, for instance, a single house lot, a non-residential site, or at most, say, a cluster subdivision, even with engineered stormwater controls. The amount of open space is not only insufficient for that, it is irrelevant, especially if it's far away or in the wrong place. It's not the reason open space is required, which is in order to provide actual usable amenities close to where people live. Chatham Park has used elements to change the master plan, so you can too. And nowhere is this more true than in the stormwater element, since the master plan didn't require or allow one, just a stormwater manual. Both the master plan and the stormwater element violate both the town's watershed ordinance and the state law on which it's based, or you can call it DEQ rules, same Those require upfront and ongoing bonding, maximum localized pay to a built area. The use of, DEQ's rules require the use of best practices and not the option to use DEQ's minimum standards. And it also involves the town's authority to review, approve, inspect, and repair stormwater structures. Under the high-density option, those rules require the town to assume all financial responsibility for all engineered stormwater systems in Chatham Park. Chatham Park just doesn't want to pay the required bonds, and even wants to now, in this stormwater element, have no funding mechanism whatsoever. The master plan doesn't actually exempt Chatham Park from the watershed overlay district requirements. It just seems to have folded in a vote to allow them to develop under the high-density option. Nor does it exempt them from the requirements in state law. But without significant revisions to the elements, it seems that Chatham Park could just go ahead proceeding as if they are exempt. A town review could only be minimal at best, yet it will be the town that people will turn to if there is flooding. Chatham Park is going to need many more trees than are proposed, including preserved, mature forests. The tree element should not permit clearcutting and then a tree inventory later on, right at the site plant stage or subdivision stage. There won't even be enough replanted trees with a maximum of 10 percent canopy coverage at maturities, not just in the most urbanized areas, and allows all kinds of double-dipping offsets of trees planted elsewhere, even in distant parks and greenways. So many areas wouldn't even have that 10 percent, ever. Chatham Park has indicated that they are revising all of the first four elements. I would encourage the board to get those revised versions now and to set aside time to go over them very carefully in workshop meetings. You only have one chance to get this right, and if you don't, you may find that you have lost control of what will be a huge percentage of our town. Chatham Park needs to have higher standards to meet the requirements of its special zoning. I would also like to agree with all the previous speakers.
Including the reference to Lucifer. I think we decided that we'd keep a civil to come about all of that kind of thing. So I'll next call it on Audrey Schwankel.
Good evening, Town Commissioners and Mayor. Good read. My name is Audrey Schwankel, and I live at 1285 Thompson Street. I come here tonight not well-prepared. When I hear people talking up here and talking about ordinances and talking about using all the jargon, I'm not going to be able to do that. I only found out about the meeting yesterday, and yet I live on a piece of property. I don't own the property, my in-laws do. And they have owned 100 acres of forested land here in Pittsboro for, well, since the early '70s. We now live on that land, and it is the only, our home is the only piece of it that is not forested. So it's still 99 percent forested land. And it is surrounded on three sides by Chatham Park. So I'm here because my husband's parents could not come. They had an out-of-time guest come in today, and they could not come to the meeting. But I wanted to just say for them, talking about buffers, that Chatham Park be, that they make sure that the buffers are on Chatham Park property and that they are adequate, especially where their property meets other property, whether or not that property is developed. Also, that the existing vegetation, the screening buffer, should be maintained during land clearing. Piece of land between us and Chatham Park should, you know, the trees should not be clear-cut there during their land clearing for their construction. And no, it is, it would not be viewed well to just replant the buffer afterward, that it should be maintained. I myself am wondering about how those two, how Chatham Park comes together with other pieces of property. Is there fencing? I imagine that people and animals and trash will be coming into the woods all along this 7,000-foot border that is between us and Chatham Park. But on the other hand, there's the wildlife corridor to think about. We have always enjoyed abundant wildlife in our woods and in our yard, from deer who eat the garden to rabbits, foxes, even a wolf, maybe even a bear. So we, we hope that that will be maintained, be able to be a place that wildlife can continue to thrive. We feel like Chatham, that we are sort of Central Park. We're going to be Central Park in Chatham Park, because there's a huge piece of land covered with trees that will not be cut down. And I wanted to read a quote that I have had for a while, and that whenever I think about Chatham Park, I'd like to read this to Chatham Park, the Board of Directors. And it's a quote from the Seattle chief of the Suquamish. I wish it was from the Tuscarora, or maybe the Sisypaha, or the Shakori. I think that's the correct pronunciation. It's not Shakori, Shakori. And the quote says this, and I am not of American Indian descent, but I, I respect their respect for their environment and their land. "We know that the white man does not understand our ways. One portion of the land is the same to him as the next, for he is a stranger who comes in the night and takes the land and takes from the land whatever he needs. The earth is not his brother, but his enemy, and when he has conquered it, he moves on." Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey Schwankel. Our next speaker is Mary Phyllis Horn.
My name is Mary Phyllis Horn, and I'm at Creekstown Apartments in Pittsboro. I've been here for 21 and a half years. It is home like no place else has ever been home to me in my whole life. And a lot of it has to do with the abundance of wildlife, the abundance of forests, and abundance of people who have the same feeling. I agree with all that I could hear from all of the other speakers here. So I'm just going to speak from my heart what is important to me, because some things hasn't, haven't been addressed. I think a tree protection isn't sufficient. I think that forests are what need to be protected because of the abundance of plants, of wildlife. The tree corridors, the corridors for the plant, the animals to go through is extremely important, and they should be not inhibited by any humans on those areas. What we do to other species, and that includes nature and includes animals, we do to ourselves. Now, the Christian religion says that the Christ said, "Unto the least of these, you do unto me." The Christian religion and numerous other world religions are human-based, and rightly so. They're things that we needed to learn. I know of only the Native Americans, and there probably aren't others, but just what I know, only the Native American cultures understand that the animals are their brothers, that the trees are their brothers, that the dogs are their brothers. And how we treat them is how we treat ourselves seven generations out. And I think we need to look at that. I object to open space in the way it has been determined so far. That could be anything with bricks, that could be anything with a few trees, but not with forests. The trees have a lot to do with our air quality, cleansing the air, giving us oxygen. So do other plants. A lot of wildlife do the same thing. And whether we know what they do for us or not, they would not be on this planet if they didn't have it for us. And I think we need to be aware of what we do to the wildlife in our forests and in our waters. I've noticed it seems like that when there is less green, such as large cities, there's a lot more of tension. There's a lot more asthma, a lot more anxiety, a lot less compassion for other people. And anybody who has grown up around a lot of green, space, forests, and animals, know that you just have to walk out there and immediately you feel peaceful. This is not an accident. This is more oxygen coming into our lungs, and that makes us feel more peaceful. It is less noise, it is less pollution. More pollution gives us less air. What we do to our surroundings is what we do to ourselves. I am very strong against clearcutting. That's lasy, that's laziness speaking. It really is. They don't want to do the research into what trees do. And I give you as an example. I moved here in the fall of 1995. That summer, I was at my father's home in Pennsylvania for two and a half, three months. When I came back, I was shocked that right across from the apartments where I lived, a lot of the trees had been taken out, and there were three new houses, and there were, there had been nothing but forests before. I walked over to the people who were doing this, and I don't remember what the name of the, the company was, but one of the men came over to me and said, "We have saved this row of trees, we've saved that row of trees, we have put more trees in around each of the properties, saved those around there. We were very careful with one of the houses having a place in their front porch where trees grew up through it. We know that this property will have a lot more monetary value for us and for others." And I really appreciated that man saying that. I appreciated the research that went into building in that area. And I'm asking that that be done the same way with Chatham Park, with what's coming up. My last part here is a suggestion, and it's only an idea, and I don't know how this would fit in, but I've heard parking lots mentioned several times tonight. Why not have a six-story parking garage all in one place? And then have a lot of trees all around it? And that would save a lot more on perhaps a little stormwater problem? With just like, instead of like a Walmart parking space, parking lot space? Maybe that would have some more help, just a suggestion. Thank you for letting us talk tonight.
Thank you, Mary Phyllis Horn. Our last speaker is Dav Robertson.
Madam Mayor, I think that my comments should have been made during the general comment session instead, mostly not really germane to this, from the Library Advisory Committee for the county.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, my understanding is you should...
Would you all right if I just come back to your next meeting? If you have comments regarding the general provisions.
We're glad to hear from you. You have waited through eight other speakers and two other public expression people, and we'd be glad to hear from you.
Well, thank you. My name is Davenport for Dav Robertson. I'm representing the county's Library Advisory Committee with the Chatham County Commissioners, basically. But as you know, you have a copy of the email message that I sent to you on March the 3rd, containing a recommendation that our committee came up with for youth kind folks, as well as for the county commissioners, to try to initiate some discussion about library services and Chatham Park. So rather than read that, I do have a few comments to make. First off, by my background, I'm a 40-year resident of the county and a four-year member of this advisory committee and retired medical library director for... of this advisory committee and retired medical library director for and for Research Triangle Park for a number of years. So with that, I just repeat the recommendation that the Library Advisory Committee made. The Library Advisory Committee recommends that the Chatham County Commissioners discuss with the Pittsburgher Town Commissioners and with Chatham Park representatives how library services can be provided to residents of Chatham Park. Public libraries are considered to be a means of promoting the public welfare, especially in the areas of literacy, research, recreational reading, and technology for information delivery. The American Library Association calls public libraries "community anchors" that address economic, education, and health disparities in the community. Educational programs, print and digital books, databases, meeting spaces, and instruction on how to use new technologies are among the many resources and services provided by libraries. A recent Pew Research Center poll shows that 2/3 of respondents say libraries are important because they promote literacy and reading, that they play an important role in giving everyone a chance to succeed, and they improve the quality of life in our community. In Chatham County, we're fortunate to have a wonderful public library system. Our Chatham Community Library in Pittsburgh is especially noteworthy. Our Library Committee would like to assure that the residents of Chatham Park will also have access to a state-of-the-art library as a community anchor. And in conclusion, I'd like to invite everybody to the Friends of the Library Book Sale from April 6, 7 to 8. But essentially, we made this proposal in order to initiate some discussion, and if you have any guidance for us, I know we need to work very closely with the Chatham County Commissioners.
Our organization.
Mr. Robertson, will you take a question?
Yes, please.
I would be curious, I don't want to put you on the spot right now, but I would be curious if you and your committee might share with this board, perhaps the county as well, your anticipation of how much more additional population could be served at the existing community library at the CCC campus, assuming local proximate development.
Yes, that is exactly what we need to figure out. I don't have that information. I can tell you now that about half of the populace of the county are registered library users, and it is a wonderful library, it's a fairly new library, it has some running. But from my personal experience as a librarian, I know that libraries are used much more if they are close to the people who want to use them, and that's, I think we should keep that in the forefront as well. But I would imagine that we need to research in that area and come up with a real recommendation. Thank you.
That's a good question. What is the comment that, I know I used to be a librarian in Chatham County, and one of the nice things, I know that at that time, there was a proposal to have a small library in North Chatham, but I don't know if Commissioner's willing, one of the nice things about Pittsburgh and Chatham County is that you can be at one of the smaller libraries and request a book from any of the libraries that are going to be delivered there. I think that's a wonderful service, and that would be true, I'd say, in the future of Chatham Park.
Sure.
So it works with construction. Anyway, I think libraries serve an important function too for people who don't have the ears, is to allow everyone to have access to the library. That's really important, especially for students.
Thank you, Dav Robertson.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll entertain your motion if you're out of public hearing now.
You haven't heard from that.
We would like to speak on behalf of Chatham.
No, ma'am.
Yep. In that case, we will ask again for a motion to go out.
Right.
Move back that book in purpose, second by Jay Carroll. Those two can give up on an eye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Our next agenda item is Commissioner update. Mayor update. I have a proclamation that I would like to read, which this upcoming first week in April is the Mayor and County Day of Recognition for the Corporation for National and Community Service. And so I thought it was the first week Chatham Pittsburgh recognized members of the community who are volunteers. This organization, the Corporation for National and Community Service, administers AmeriCorps volunteers and Vista volunteers and senior corps volunteers, and it happens that we have two AmeriCorps volunteers currently working here in Chatham County, Moya Holstein and Ariya Blythe, who work at the Chatham Habitat. And various whereabouts here are that AmeriCorps, Vista, and senior corps volunteers have served our community with distinction over the years, including working for Habitat, Raffi, and other organizations, and contributing greatly to our community. And that there are many other organizations in our community that depend upon supportive volunteers, volunteers who read with or tutor our children in school, volunteers who sit with hospice patients and caregivers, volunteers who help with maintenance and care of the pollinator garden at Chatham Mill, and volunteers who work in our Big Brother and Sister Program, Chatham Volunteers for Children. So as mayor of the town of Pittsburgh, I hereby bring thanks to and recognition for all the volunteers of the town and county for the important contributions made to our community since the 27th day of March 2017, and will enter that in the public record. Very few meetings this past time period. Rotary had its installation of its charter members here in Pittsburgh, and I appreciate greatly Brian Grußbeck, the town manager, inviting me to that, and our work with a group of people who were involved in immigration matters in Tampa. And those are the only two meetings I attended. Does the board have other meetings they would like to call to attention, Triangle J or Climate Change? You'll be attending the town development meeting tomorrow morning?
Well, you know, it's frightening.
Great. All right. Now, we've moved our matter off the agenda, off the contentious agenda item number three. We'll come on in on our regular agenda then. Did we say that was new or old business?
New.
Do you? Then we'll attack old business next. And Paul Horn, what's up with the Parks Plan?
Yes. First of all, I'm going to leave these business cards here on the lectern when I leave, and I encourage members of the public, and I'll also leave a stack, I think that Brian has left, and any of you board members or anyone else, take a word with one, that please distribute these. They have a website, your, where you can sign up to learn more about the Parks Plan. Thus far, we've had over 2,100 visits, over 800 votes on polls, over 73, or 73 exactly, email subscribers, and over 90 open-ended comments on that page. So for a town of 2,000 people, or 4,000 and some people, 2,100 visits isn't too bad. So, but that's not, still not enough. We need more, so the more you can get the word out about this plan, the better. There are two meetings coming up, so this memo is addressing three meetings that are coming up in the near future. Two of them are this week. Thursday, March 30th, at the Holmes Meeting Room at the Chatham County Library, they'll be the first open house for this Parks Plan. Our consultants have been doing background work, have been doing a demographic analysis, they've been analyzing the existing conditions of our parks, looking at the planning documents which influence and have an impact on this plan, and certainly this plan would certainly hope to have an impact on the UDO and on matters such as open space and greenways and development patterns which could go around parks and be influenced in the planning realm as well. So we encourage people to attend that meeting. The second meeting is that next Friday. These will effectively be the same content, but we want more people to be able to attend it. We want this to be a really a community-driven process, so that we want community providing the priorities. What is important? Is it greenways? Is it open space? Athletic complexes? All of the above? At the end of the day, the Board of Commissioners needs to make decisions based on sound policy and public input, and that's what this plan aims to do. That, and again, I'll read off these dates, but the best bet is to check the calendar, go to this site, and sign up for emails. You can receive updates as they occur. So March 31st is the second open house, essentially the same content as the first. That one will be held in the new, the beautiful new Agriculture and Conference Center, which I was very pleased to attend the grand opening this weekend. The next meeting will be done in conjunction with the Economic Development Corporation of Chatham County, and that is looking at Parks' particular impact on economic development. And we have three experts in their fields doing presentations and then a panel discussion, which I'll moderate. Kyle Touchdown, the president of the Economic Development Corporation, will be one of the speakers. Jody Laidoff, manager of Planning and Sustainability with Newland Communities, who developed Briar Chapel, and Sig Hutchinson, Chair of the Wake County Board of Commissioners and a longtime open space advocate. This will really touch on, again, Parks' impact and interplay with economic development, whether that's via tourism, via increased property values, via attracting creative entrepreneurs and best talent and best corporations to locate to a place we're competing in a global marketplace, not just locally. So a lot of successful cities have really invested in Parks and Recreation in order to attract the best talent. So I would again encourage certainly the board members and certainly anyone who's interested in the public to also attend these meetings and participate online and in the meetings, and I'm very excited about this process, so thanks for the support. Any questions?
Thank you. Our next agenda item, under open is the Chatham Park Division Loan, phasing, signage, lighting, parking, loading.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So tonight, after holding the public hearing again on these particular elements, you all have come to the point where you all have made a decision on phasing, signage, lighting, parking, and loading. You've received the recommendations from the committee, you've received staff's comments, you've heard from the public at the December 12th meeting, public hearing, and tonight's public hearing regarding these elements. What you have in your packet is responses by Chatham Park in a sort of a response term that we have given to this board in the past. But what you've been given, and one of the things that I was hoping Chatham Park was going to provide, was some edits to those elements. You have two versions of each element. One is a strike-through version that indicates where they've made changes, and then should be a clean copy where they have made those changes. Staff has met with Chatham Park, and we understand the changes that have been brought forth. I think it's a good time for you all to hear from Chatham Park on their proposed changes. I received these last week, and staff has not fully gotten into all of the changes, specifically the lighting element. I understand that they have tried to address a lot of lighting ordinance, and they can expand on that whenever they come up to speak to you. Staff is here for any questions, but it's really, I want you all to hear from Chatham Park, and then we can entertain any questions afterwards.
Yeah, just as a note, the signage aspect, I only got one.
Yep, that's all I received as well.
Okay.
I didn't, it was just that copy.
Got it. All right. Yeah, it was the part that I did, did trouble with it.
Yeah.
Sheriff Smith, will you be speaking on behalf of Chatham Park?
One thing I would add to what Mr. Jones just reviewed, is that the rewrites of the elements were based on the responses that we made a month or so ago, and there's nothing that has at least substantially changed from the issues that we agreed to, or we said we would revise or whatever was presented there. So what, rather, and I think from my memory, most of you have been at the, and the planning board had that information and voted to forward these to you with their recommendation for approval based on those changes taking place. And so nothing has changed with the language that has been presented with you, it's just the exact wording is now something that you have, but the word smithing is important to you. And I can, I was going to say, since most of you have been, many of you at the planning board meeting have heard me go over the things I would do right now. I don't know, I would rather just let you tell me the particular, we'll start with phasing, and let's just go one by one, the elements, and then let you ask me questions or bring up concerns with what was presented to you, if you could. Or I'll go through every one and again, however you'd like me to, but I don't want to go over things that you don't think you have an issue with.
Thanks.
So I'm starting with phasing, just as a suggestion.
Questions from the board on phasing?
I think, I think I could make more productive use of Mr. Smith's time after having gotten through this. I've just begun to read the edits. Anyone else have similar thoughts?
I think I would like you to spend the hours of studying all the text around and helping all of the people.
I've got a couple of comments that I can provide. In getting the phasing, in section one, purpose, the second paragraph, says the primary purpose of this element is to assist the town of Pittsburgh in its planning and provisions of the extension of municipal services. And I don't think that adequately describes my understanding of the purpose of phasing, and I would suggest that the sentence read, the primary purpose of this element is to assist in Chatham Park and the town in planning and provision of the extension of municipal I recognize the logic in the phasing plan. I think the county makes a very good recommendation about milestones and checking in, and I would like to, I think we can accomplish that goal through two other features, the additional elements, and that being a combination of the public facilities, additional elements, and development agreements, where I would like for those items to address milestones to the one development. Where I would like for those items to address milestones, one, development impacts produce the need for provision of infrastructure and facilities, discussion of adequate public facilities requirements, and a schedule for periodic assessments of milestones, status, goals, projections, and adjustments as necessary. In this version of the development phasing element, it speaks to those matters as being included in the development agreement and for public facilities. So I'm comfortable with the phasing plan being as is described presently with that modification that I suggested. And you added here two development review processes, subdivisions of site plans and signage. And I think it would be appropriate to add one other matrix for review, and that's for the special projects that are at the perimeter of Chatham Park and that have been deemed to require special use for the town. There's special provision in there that those particular projects include a public area. So I think it'd be appropriate to put that in flow charts, for the special condition. And I think it would be appropriate for those to also include a neighborhood meeting. So, and we're talking about projects that are within 500 feet of the, much as was described earlier this evening, as deemed something special. And it is something special. And so that's what I would, those are my comments on this. Oh, I think it would be appropriate, maybe this is done elsewhere, and if you can tell me about it, I'd be happy to acknowledge it. But we talk about locating infrastructure, and we talk about extending public infrastructure. And I think it'd be good if we knew, if we had a definition of what those things were. I think we all think we know, but it would be wonderful if we still had infrastructure and all that.
Commissioner Figo, could I ask you to repeat your prior point? Immediately, your prior point about proximity to.
The master plan describes a special case that projects within a 500 feet of the perimeter. Those uses are deemed special use permits in the town's housing ordinance, that they require a public area, not only just the regular process described as staff planning board. It requires yet another staff, and that public staff.
You were suggesting that be added to the flow chart?
That it be identified as a piece, one of the special site plans. So it's for all to see.
If it's a 500 feet, public area, is it 50 feet that's a special use permit?
No. The special use permit comes from our zoning ordinance. We recognize that this was, this was something special, and needed to give the Chatham Park and the development community the opportunity to mitigate any perceived impacts. Because we said in, within Chatham Park, there's no setbacks, there's no buffers, right? But on the program, we wanted to have something addressed in that area.
Can I ask you a few questions? Just so I understand the information, since we've had, we've had responses, comments to the town for a number of weeks, you guys have not seen those until this week?
No. They're being drafted drafts, but we have not had a chance for them.
Okay, that's just so, just so, because some of the, like, for example, your comment, in our responses, we've addressed that issue of checkpoints. Because it is a general statute requirement with the development agreement that you have an annual review for those checkpoints. So that would be going on as one. And then we point out every time that you get a site plan, subdivision plan from us, that's an opportunity. There's checkpoints in every approval of each site in Chatham Park, so that all occurred very frequently. No, I just want to make sure I understood it.
Further questions? Do you want to move down to parking, loading, any places?
I would suggest if, really, you've just had this a few days, and I wouldn't start with reading the rewrite of the, of the language, I would start with reading the responses. Because that gives you a broader view of the issue, and then you see how it's handled in detail in the rewrite. Would you make a decision on this tomorrow? No, you're not. You just got everything this recently, you're not gonna make a decision.
Commissioner, on it, just there that, and so that, Mr. Poe, I'm not mistaken, that we haven't actually had a chance to really, and please excuse my voice, we haven't had actually a chance to really fully get all of this and absorb all of it. So I think he was saying that we needed more time, and I'm not mistaken.
And it occurs to me that, I certainly am not opposed to extending privilege to Commissioner Figo because he has questions and feedback prepared, but I don't want to subject you to going through each and twice.
I'll go through this a dozen times if you want me to. All right. So if you would like for me to go through the responses, I'm happy to do that, and we can do it again when you're ready to do it again. So I'll, at your.
I might also, your recommendations, you touched on, that's why you go about reading this, because there's a lot of little red boxes that they format in, and I assume that this is, if we're online, you'd be able to, you can just kind of, there's a lot of red on this.
The only one that's got a lot of red is lighting.
Okay, I'm looking at these later pages, this is probably the issue of the red formatted one.
So anywhere it's going to say formatted, it's just, it's not gonna be a substantive change? That's just gonna be the font, or the color of the font, or the italic, or something like that? And I don't.
There's a lot of things that are underlined.
Yes. So underlines and strike-throughs would be substantive changes or edit changes.
I don't believe there's anything underlined.
Yeah, I think those are the things that were added.
You want to approach, I think, your questions on each section?
No, I do have, you know, some comments, so.
How about some of your comments?
And the parking, of course, sorry, the, gets in the weeds, the parking, well. So I am, let's see, I'm on, the item, section two, rules for competing requirements, multiple uses, gives the advocate the ability to propose something different, and that the planning director can approve it based on a study prepared by a North Carolina licensed design professional. And through the document, there is this item called an administrative approval. And I just think it would be appropriate in this sentence to include that designation because it sets it off as something separate than just using the charts. And I don't, I'm trying to be clear, not wanting to suggest that any mixed use or multiple use of an element, you've got to do the study, but you can't just go to the park. So between the words, on the second sentence, third word over, approval, says approval by the planning director. I would suggest to take approval of an administrative approval by the planning director. Next comment is really, I'm curious, I'd like to hear what Jeff had to say about this too. And it was a recommendation from the advisory committee that the number of electric vehicle charging stations be changed from, I think, a maximum of 10%. To say a goal of the project is to have 10%. So that's clearly not regulatory in any way, shape, or form. You can meet that requirement all day long. It was a goal, and I felt that. So I think that leaves it up to market conditions to kind of utilize, if the demand is there, then I think probably will apply. And so just making it a goal, it's not regulatory. Do you have any thoughts on that, Jeff?
I would agree with that, yes. So I want to say that the intent was that there would be at least 10%. That there could be an opportunity to have more than 10% if a site or a development wanted to, if market conditions wanted, not to say, no, you can't go above 10%. Jim's still here, so Jim is the chair of our, Jim Nass is the chair of our committee. We may be able to expand on that. But I do believe that that was what the committee was thinking, that we have an requirement of 10%, and then not limit that to just 10%, but if you have to go above that, somebody want to do 12% or 10% on that. That was, that's what I think.
And I think from Chatham Park's perspective, they put that language in there because they intended to allow those stations to count as parking spaces and not be excluded and something additional. I don't know if I hit that right.
Well, I agree with your point. To me, changing the language to, we were asked to change the language to a goal, so we changed it. We had up to 10%, so you could, and I don't know if the intent was something different from a goal. But I will say this, if it's a 10% requirement, I don't think we're gonna want to agree with that, because I think that's too much.
So your, your language was.
Up to 10%.
Up to 10%. And that would be regulatory.
All cars are electric?
Well, that's where I think.
And that, none of us are driving cars because the autonomous car is prevailing, and we're not parking them there, so they're all kind of things down there.
And if I recall, the conversation at the planning board level, at the element committee, this committee, it was acknowledged that in thirty years, there could be a completely different way of transportation of sub- and electric cars.
And I think you probably understand this from your daily experiences better than I do, but the market's gonna, gonna take you there. And if we're under parking electric cars, then we're gonna respond to that. But at the same time, if we provide 10, a minimum of 10% of spaces that can only be used by electric cars, you run the risk of having, you're building a number of spaces that aren't being used. And that's not the intent either.
Right, exactly.
And we're already, you know, as part of, at least part of the presentations we make in the community, we're putting electric car charging stations within each of our homes when they're built. And so, I mean, we would be talking about people coming from outside of Chatham Park and working here, so, you know, that affects the numbers as well.
Well, you're right, it is something you've gotta, you gotta get right, because you will have stranded parking spaces, and, you know, the businesses will be unhappy, customers will be unhappy. They'll be looking for other places to park, and likely other people unhappy, so it is an interesting equation.
Can I follow up to your question? I had, I thought I'd heard that, that, or read that not all residences are going to have in-house and in garage park are charged.
Well, we can say, we've been saying, I guess I should say, single-family homes would have those in their garages. I guess I shouldn't say that every, for example, every apartment would have one. So that's, that's a fair question.
I'm thinking, so Off Street Loading talks about loading spaces required for industrial office institutions, business, and other uses that can be expected to regularly receive delivery goods. And I'm thinking about an exception for, providing an exception for those types of businesses that only get FedEx and UPS. They pull in, they stop. They run in and out, and so to have a site dedicate planning to a delivery, a loading space that will be used for other purposes, I don't know, it seems unnecessary to me. And I'd like to explore the idea that the option for administrative approval for sites that don't, are not expected, the business that's not expected to use anything other than FedEx UPS. They're not having traffic good, huh? Not gonna happen.
At the same time, it's important to have a place for UPS trucks to park them on my trucking.
True. I know in the shopping center that we're in, on occasion, people get blocked, parked in, always can get upset about it. Regarding the location of Off Street loading requirements, it says public streets may not be used. And I also think that maybe there should be an exception there for the highly urbanized downtown areas. Where I think this will, if you've got multiple lanes, it is highly possible in very urbanized areas that there may, there may be opportunities to benefit from allowing load. We go to the parking standards, and it says that drive aisles 24 feet for two-way traffic or 12 feet for one-way traffic. And I just wonder if the fire marshal has weighed in on that, on that 12-foot dimension of the asset, did they weigh in on that? I don't know if you've seen what, what we were given, but the chart was angled. Yeah, and the notes are small and illegible. But one of the notes says to provide, I think, four or five feet spacing between flooding I'm thinking if you've got a double-loaded, two double-loaded parking bays, and you've got parking spaces sharing a common central line. and you've got parking spaces sharing a common central line, is this saying that now there must be four feet between, if they can't share a common line, and if there's four feet more asphalt? Or made out of asphalt, because something happens?
Well, typically, if you've got a parking space facing another parking space, 18 feet on both of those is sufficient. The bumper overhang still works. If you have a sidewalk on the edge of that parking space, then the bumper overhang gets into making the sidewalk unusable. So you've got to account for that and the location of the sidewalk or the width of the sidewalk. I don't think that's getting at this here. And I'm making notes, I can.
Yeah. What I do kind of want us to do is to have a speculation that required that much more impervious surface was wasted and detrimental to all the environmental impacts that we're talking about. Talking about available stacking areas, I don't see anywhere that it describes a side of stacking area.
What do you say the size, would you?
We're going to say you got six, yeah.
So if it says four, you're thinking four times, yeah, four times 18 or four times 28 or whatever.
Yeah. The next thing, as they were, Off Street Parking Alternatives 1C talks about agreement for off-site parking. And it was allowed for 10 years. In that no use shall be continued if parking is removed unless such parking still be given, partly all approved. And I guess does expiration of the agreement constitute removal of those parking spaces? Or does it simply then become a non-performing situation?
Well, I think at least in my mind, it means we would be removing the agreement for the 10 years left.
So I think that's agreements should be that, but I can't make sure this is a bad situation where it doesn't force them to do that. I guess it has to be this off-site parking. And that was if for.
And I've been taking notes, which I'll do my best to recreate what you're getting at. I'm sure I will. I'm sorry, man, which one?
This is the board on group makes the signage for lighting.
It's like lighting for last.
So this is the one where we have only the strike through verse and not the re-edit verse.
And let me just say here, the only changes that were recommended, oh, two points. One, we originally rewrote this in regard to Supreme Court decision that rendered many municipal sign ordinances in violation of their ruling. And I think it had to do with content. And so we rewrote this to be consistent with what they were looking for. So this, the wording here does that without you having to kind of, I don't kind of know that you were going to worry about that. But there have been many municipalities rewriting their sign ordinances because of that. Secondly, the only changes that were requested is there was some confusion about would, and it got into, and you've seen, we've done this presentation enough, we had some, just some wild examples of signs that could possibly be included in villages or activity centers. And actually, people sort of like the ability to, because, I'm not going to, whether keep Austin weird or keep Pittsburgh quirky or whatever we're going after, it wanted the ability to do some unusual signage. And there was some confusion about who, whether you had the ability to have the final approval on that. And so we've made it clear in the changes here that you have absolute final authority on approving every sign. So that was not on us. That would be on you. And that's the only change that has occurred throughout the process on signage.
And I think that was one of Jeff's concerns, so I think that has been addressed. And I think the other thing that was of concern Jeff had was that there be a process identified. And I think one of the previous elements got a description of that process.
Oh, yeah, the submit order, right.
So I did not have anything more on that.
I think I have questions about, sometimes the blacks can get a commission. So maybe the, I haven't had a chance to read all this, but I wondered if there's some control over that. The dotted with an American flag or the advertising flag? The advertising flag, like a whole row of employers and there's traffic for dogs there. Over the top of the, just in the chart, it doesn't even represent the issue. Is there banning of that with us or limits on how?
There is.
A maximum two. Well, anyway, there's language on flags in Section 4D.
And Section 6, nonstop prohibited signs. There's eighteen of those I recall. Something in that was addressed here. I guess I don't know.
Yeah, that's there on page seven. Just bring it up because we, a lot of the flags are much larger than the setting. Yeah, we think about that because we're not on the interstate highway where we have to show extreme pentry tips and attract business.
Maybe the flag is, right, language, maybe a graphic banner or flexible banner or. I think it's, from my point of view is the fact that they're rather delicate, they wear quickly, they tend to look shabby, short order, and in some cases, they remain out there. There's bases along powerways that are still in place from five years ago, I think, any longer. Fly bases there, whoever's mowing is mowing on top of it, getting tipped up. I'm sure there's concerns, this stuff concerns. It's in our UDO. And I believe that they, I submitted these comments to the UDO process.
I think Chuck, here's an example for, I want to, this is an apology that I've not got the road to ask about this, but where did we fall on or where did it fall out as regards things like the rapidly changeable LED information signs?
I'm going to, we have different, there are a number of different categories that touch on that. And then the lighting ordinance also gets into some of those things. But I can't, if you give me, this is obviously a lot of them, there shouldn't be, so I can go through it and find something.
Would that be defined as a changeable copy?
Well, that's definitely another changeable copy. It's in the temporary, I mean, there are a number of places where.
And it is one that is prohibited except for gas station signs, driver's signs, more keys that comply with the requirements of this element of the sign. So I think you probably tried to address it in there.
After you read it, you can see if it gets where you're trying to go with it.
No, I agree that I think those are really problematic signs. There are enough distractions as you're driving down roads.
Yeah.
And, you know, the one at Whole Park, McDonald's, it went in, got some, it's just there and applies and changes constantly. They want you to read the text while you're driving. I just.
Well, I'm sorry, and I thought you were at, you know, we do deal with that. Then what I thought you were covering is something to do because of the process of testing and putting, you know how many towns, and you probably do this too, will hang banners from telephone poles that might say some event's coming and it's a long, you know, series of telephone poles. Right. And they're coming up with LED versions of this, so you don't have to spend the money with your staff of putting them up and taking them down. So.
I'm intrigued by that. And I just, my concern is the ones that flash a different message every 30 seconds or scroll. And in particular, there's one, really, really egregious one on Highway 17 down in Wilmington. And I go back and forth, one of his, my father enhanced it, back and forth to Wilmington. And it's so bright that at night, I have to really intentionally look away from it, prevent night blindness. And so in that regard, again, I'm curious and intrigued that what dudes want to do, but I would just be concerned about the brightness of the lights. I think I've addressed that, my satisfaction at least. The other thing, though, I think that it was either in conversation at the initial ordinance review committee or maybe it was in private conversation. Again, I am, I think is intrigued about the potential creative opportunities for unusual signage, building side signage, kind of almost structural or sculptural signage. As intrigued as other members are. But one thing that I just, I hope that we might have a serious conversation about or actually say explicitly, we don't want to have actual flares of flames in signs.
Well, I'll say this. One, I generally agree with you. Two, when those kind of signs come in, you are the final authority on that. If you don't like flames, then there won't be flames unless you change your mind. And then you do like flames because of the way they're presented. But that's the sort of thing. I mean, there's no way you can get to that, particularly when you're going outside of standards, that you can address those sorts of things, other than allowing creativity. And then you guys get to, we've probably spent a long time going through just the review of approval or something like that. So that always comes back to you and you do it honestly.
So I think that a lot of this lighting ordinance is actually.
Lighting or signage?
Sorry? Yeah.
Oh, you know.
Yeah. I don't need to.
Well, you brought up flames, though.
Yeah.
Mr. Johnson, don't we have in our sign ordinance, regarding these eliminated signs?
Have current thumb board? Yes, sir. Yes.
Okay, now, where are we going with this ordinance that we have now to this lighting, to this signage?
Well, they're proposing signage regulations that may look similar to ours, but they're definitely wanting to have Chatham Park influence on their ordinance. But there's going to be overall things like these banners and debris signs that will be pretty universal between the town and Chatham Park.
Yeah, this is very typical information. This is not straying from typical municipal signage ordinance information. And again, I would say that you're going to be rewriting yours just because of the Supreme Court rulings, some versions of it anyway.
Which Chatham Park will be doing, it sounds like water tanks that will be happening.
Well, we're doing water tanks, but you notice we didn't include any information on that because you're part of that decision as well, so.
Do you want to do the lighting then?
It seemed to me that a lot of the lighting changes were in response to requests for the dark skies light model. And so I think a lot is in here. Not being a lighting person, I struggle with the translation between humans and foot candles and all the other measurements of intensive lighting. So, yeah, this is one where I feel like needs some help. Some lighting expert, someone who can help me translate that this actually gives the change we want. Because I see a lot of the language that is reflected in that dark skies light that they've taught you to dredge up. You know, because it talks about the LZ zero, LZ one, LZ two, LZ three, and use the same language with just different things.
And that is language, but that's also the model ordinance, not the light version. So what we were concerned with was the light version that had not been authorized by either of the groups that wrote the model ordinance. So what we tried to do was limit ourselves to those things that were in the original ordinance.
That language is using.
And it gets into lighting zones.
As opposed to rural suburban and urban.
So it's basically taking, you know, the less intensely used is going to have lower levels of lighting. And stepping on up until you get to. But then, again, I think we, in the responses you'll read, that we said we are still going to stick to foot candles. That's the standard around here that people understand. And so we translated the numbers that they were using into what would be foot candle versions of those numbers.
For me, that would be extraordinarily helpful to see that. If you've got a chart, if you provide that.
Well, I can, yeah, we, I am not going to sit here and bore you with that right now, but I could at any time.
To have that presented in the text might be helpful.
Well, it is. Yeah, well, okay, I hear you.
Conversion factor or?
I mean, you have to, if you go to the table, you have to use this maintain foot candles column with the uniformity ratio. And you use those together to get to foot candles. And when you put those together, you get to a foot candle that's standard in different land uses in this region.
Yeah, they were using something other than foot candles.
In the model, in the ordinance, yeah, they were.
Yeah.
Right. That'll make your head explode. And really, what we're trying to get at here, and again, you can disagree with us as we go through this, you know, finalizes process. We understand the, I mean, we're not in disagreement with the issues of dark sky. And so we have tried to go through here and say we're going to lower levels of light as you get further away from the more intense uses. So I think that's consistent. Secondly, we got rid of any, we've got all cut off, all lights will be cut off, so there's no movement of light up. We've got all cut off, all lights would be cut off, so there's no movement of light up. So, I mean, we're going in that direction. But thirdly, you know, what makes this different for us in this region compared to... A lot of the municipalities that have adopted this type of ordinance are in the desert. And they don't, and their trees don't grow taller than the light posts. And so, you know, eventually, we end up at a point where, you know, the lightest thing here below, we didn't see it, but the trees are keeping it from moving up in the air. So there are a number of nuances here that make it a little bit different from just adopting it totally. But then, we do agree with the direction that a lot of us trying to go.
So...
And I think you, I'm sorry, Mr. Minas, you brought up too, the point of cool temperatures and warm temperature lights. And we've met with Duke on this. And that, in this, we get... We talk about ranges. They...
Ranges Kelvin.
Yes, in this Kelvin temperature. They various, they being Duke specifically had many, many meetings on what they were gonna do with this. And they moved away from the cooler lights and say 5,000 Kelvin and above. And their standard, and so what we put in here was 3,000 to 4,000 Kelvin as the range that would be an acceptable range for those lights. They can work within that. They couldn't work if you were gonna go down to 2,000 Kelvin. And they don't, they don't have the inventory of that. And it was not only gonna cost us a lot of money, it's gonna cost you a lot of money because you'd be taking the lights in the right way that they're primarily dealing with. So 3,000 to 4,000 seem to be an acceptable range when you're looking at, looking at the issues.
I appreciate that. That's good to hear that Duke is grappling with that. The, for the public's benefit, the LED streetlights that are now expanding in use because they're so cost-effective and energy-efficient, they tend to have a really garish blue tinge. And so, there's an evolution and a recognition that actually that has impacts on ecosystems and human health. And so, the warmer lights tend to be less of an impact on ecosystems and human health. And the warmth or coolness of the light, blueness or the, something like redness of the light, is measured in Kelvin units. The issue of light quality, I think, is... It's a related one, but it's slightly different from the dark skies protection issue. And the thing that I want to observe is that by taking a custom way out, you're essentially doing the same thing that these international organizations reacted so horrified, in such a horrified manner to, that there was an MLO, LITE version. In my own research, my understanding was that one of those two organizations, I forget which, actually wrote the MLO right, liked, but that it probably got caught up in some kind of board-level dispute and was never endorsed, but indeed was produced by one of those organizations. And so...
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
Well, we had a conference call with both representatives from the International Dark Sky Association and the Illuminating Engineers Society, and neither one of them said that. They were, they wanted to know where this came from.
Well, maybe changes of staff. But indeed, it was produced by one of those two organizations. The municipality in Utah that listed to their website got it from that national organization. The reason why that light was created, LITE version was created, was because the MLO was viewed as burdensome. It's cumbersome, it's got all these different lighting zones. And I understand why you didn't adopt the MLO for that reason, because it is cumbersome.
Well, it's not just for us, though, it's also for you and your staff.
Got it, got it.
So it's for all of us.
Another great reason to do it. But again, that was my reason for favoring and having curiosity and interest in the LITE version, the light version of the model lighting ordinance. It's a lot of jargon here, guys, I apologize. But the point that I wanna make is that I think that you're not getting the maximum benefit if you're doing a custom version. Because if what you're looking for is exceptionality and the ability to leverage and market on a global level, your superior development, why wouldn't you want to go for the MLO? Or why wouldn't you want to persuade that organization?
Because Duke cannot meet those standards.
They can't meet those standards?
No, not well. They would say, "We can meet any standard at a cost." And you, neither you nor I can afford to meet that standard.
Well, I wrote to the fellow with Duke, I finally got through to him, and asked what is needed to get to that point. And I got no response, crickets at that point. So if it's just a matter of dollars, I'm a little bit skeptical because this is all about market penetration. And if we're the vanguard, then maybe we can help push Duke along to introduce a product that they can have in inventory. It only appears at first in the PDD, but then it expands across their service territory in North Carolina and South Carolina and elsewhere.
Well, I think it's a little, it's a little different that if you're saying this is a Chatham Park-only standard versus a town of Pittsburgh standard. I don't think that's fair.
I agree.
And so, if you're willing to, you know, then we can talk about it. If you're willing to take all those sorts of burdens for yourself.
Friendly, it only appears in Pitt Town and Pittsburgh at first. But I, you know, I think very seriously, your rhetoric about wanting to be exceptional and world-class.
We do too.
And I think that this is an example of that. You know, if we wanna be world-class, let's do a model lighting ordinance. Let's do it, guys.
And I think we're doing that.
And I apologize.
It may not go as far as...
I wanna qualify all of that because I haven't had the chance to dig through this. And again, I feel almost like Commissioner Fiocca that maybe this is one of those situations where I'm never gonna have the capacity to properly evaluate this without outside consulting assistance or some expertise. Good conversation. Thank you.
Do it again, I'm sure.
I just wanna add one other thing to this discussion. That is, I know there's a lot of women that are walking through the streets at night. You know, bright light can be a comfort. And I've not seen these kind of lights on a bigger scale. Will women still face walking in an urban setting with this light?
To my sentiments, that was addressed in both the MLO and the MLO light. Its safety was absolutely paramount, not impaired, and...
And I would say the question is not so much an urban setting as it is a suburban residential setting.
All right. So at one point, we had discussed the fact that we need more time with this, given the fact that we got it on Thursday evening. Right in the morning. And so, is there, is there a motion or other determination about how we address this mess? Or do we just not take any action at all? Do we want to make a recommendation about when we should come back on the agenda?
I'm all ears.
Well, we do know that we have our upcoming meeting agenda. We're gonna be talking about Jordan Lake partnerships. We don't seem to have any public hearings on April the 10th. But I'm not sure, as meaty as all this is, that April 10th is a good date.
Yeah. Nobody inclined to agree with that. Mayor, Karen.
We have hotel incentives, so there's a public hearing on April 24th.
If you said it, I haven't received any information yet.
Okay. Or maybe it, which...
Could be April 24th.
24th. Looks like a good time. Is it more agree, April 24th? But then let us make a recommendation that we approach this again, have a further study on the 24th of April.
Mr. Fiocca, are you looking for answers to your questions before that time?
That'd be really helpful.
Okay. For any other points or questions in the MLO. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Our next item on the whole business, your final flat review for Riverstone subdivision. Contemplative and community made. Wonderful. Back in...
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Tonight, we have a final review, flat review for Riverstone subdivision. Back in 2015, the board approved a preliminary plan for 33 lots to be created along an access drive of 64 East going out of town near the bypass. The applicant has taken this time since 2015 to construct the roads. This is a recent aerial photo captured from Google, which you can see the streets have been put in. And those streets, this is a little unique subdivision that's outside of our ETK. We have, we're not gonna take these roads over because it's not the town. So DOT will be taking these roads over. And DOT has signed the flat to accept this, to say that these roads are going to be accepted. This subdivision is also served by private wells and septics. And there's a unique configuration of the lots and how the septic works. Some of the lots don't have direct septic field access, so there's some configuration of piping and such to get the lots, especially on the eastern side, to their septic fields. The applicant can speak a little bit more to that if you have questions. But in other words, staff has found that this is acceptable. And processes that the planning board gave a positive recommendation to move forward with the final flat at their March 6 meeting. And you all are the final decision on the final flat. And the mayor would be potentially signing these flats if you found the flat to be in compliance. I can answer any questions of the applicant's here.
The, there was some discussion at planning board, I don't remember if it was on the planning board or out in the audience, about the fact that when you have off-site septics like this, that sometimes it's best to have the same contractor deal with all of them so that there's a continuity of design, continuity of installation and maintenance, and...
Let's see if Glenn can come up and speak to that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
My name's Glenn Futral, the developer. You're absolutely correct. We are gonna deal, we have six lots that have, their septic system is off-site. We're doing that through a commencement. And we will be putting in the piping for all six of those lots. That's the way we're gonna take care of it. We're doing that at the recommendation of a consultant who did the design and the layout. And we can see the potential problems that would be created if we didn't do that.
Great, very good, thank you. Did we have any other comments, or is it important you have any other questions?
Okay, I have questions, yeah. Well, the note says that the PFP will be inspected and maintained by the property owners or the HOA. Which property was? All of them?
I don't think the HOA is...
Have they...
HOA.
So has the maintenance covenant been reported?
This was a few years ago. I don't remember. Go back and check.
And the other thing that... So was this approved before we adopted, before the manual came out? So...
Okay. This is approved back in, what year was it? 2015.
15.
Well, I'll double-check on the stormwater approval, make sure it fits where we were at that date.
And so, that device is designed to manage a certain storm and conditions. And it says that there are 7.69 acres of impervious on the property. Does that include the house development? And had that conflict inside designed? Or is your engineer his?
Piedmont Land Design.
I have, one of the reasons that I...
We have two stormwater ponds that are permanent. They will be maintained by our homeowners association. They will be assessed to us, that will take care of the maintenance of that. Our covenants speak to it. I think there's five pages in the covenants that addresses all the issues about maintaining the stormwater ponds.
And it, I found on the flat, these boxes that just have three X's in them. And I'm wondering if that's supposed to mark something important on the flat. Those are addressed, ladies. What's the parcel it's addressed? That's where it addresses, we get. But this flat's gonna get recorded and won't be touched again. So I guess, Brett, are you satisfied that the ponds are designed? Is that the areas draining through those ponds have the ability to control the amount of impervious that's gone to them?
Yes, yeah, we, I met with the engineer years ago, and I remember that. I questioned him on the same design issue. So yes, I have, I'll be honest with you, I haven't looked at this in a while. Stormwater design, stormwater permit. So I'll probably go file and just make sure everything works correctly.
But the entry to the subdivision is apparently Steve Bro, DRT, has no problem taking over a road with that much steep slope?
Not at all. I met with DOT a couple of times, and met with them. We went two weeks ago to get this flat signed. They're completely satisfied with all the construction we've done. They've been involved with us every step of the way.
Motion to approve.
Motion, Madam Siena.
Sorry.
Second by him involving very quietly. Are there any further questions? If not, I would say it's easy if I can, I...
All right.
Those are questions. Under new business, we're pulling in the consent item from number three from page one regarding the separate allowance terms. And we still have, we do have that with the engineer. What a trooper. Thank you, Kevin. Can you run this or change this?
Yeah, I guess, I just had a little bit, maybe a form a little better on the GAS B73. And what is, all this entitled, I'm really not too sure about the special separation.
Right, so for, yeah, so for law enforcement officers, we are required... This is a new GADC standard, so going, is it an accounting standard that we need to adhere to starting this fiscal year? So we've already budgeted for doing this study. But for our law enforcement officers, we have to make sure they're accounting for their separation benefit correctly. And so, it's just...
Is this just retirement, or is this, if they leave early?
It's their retirement.
Yeah. Okay, okay. And is that 20-year retirement?
Yeah, I believe so.
When, when they retire, do we have enough money to pay for the retirement? Basically, we'll be, kind of happening everywhere, it's what I ran away from in Chicago.
And it's, and it also, they also make sure, they're just looking to make sure that we're accounted for properly, and that, and that we are, that we have enough to cover that. And they also are looking at, you know, the, the other benefits that we offer to the law enforcement officers, and that we also cover their health insurance for a period of time. So, we have to make sure that we're accounting for that proper. But so, it's only for, this study is only for the law enforcement officers.
But is it, if it was available to all town employees also, right?
No.
No?
Not, it's not for this study.
Okay.
This, that, that accounting rule is only for the, the law enforcement. And we're only having that Kavanaugh-McDonald consulting, they're only looking at that at the law enforcement. We've already budgeted for the amount.
Okay, that's all I need.
Okay. Anything else?
Any further questions?
This is a really minor, but I tried to do a little bit of reading on this, and I think I found what was the state law, or county law for this, and it seemed to suggest that the allowance ended at 62?
Yeah.
That was intriguing. Is that because the assumption is that sort of security kicks in after that?
I believe so. I mean, I'm not sure, I can't, I think it's a law.
And that's what it is.
All right, so, does the move is ever from the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve item number three from the consent agenda?
So, moved.
Sorry.
Move by Michael John Vonnell. Second question, if you're willing to take between you and I.
Aye.
So, go ahead and push through here, and unless anyone has any objections, and Ryan Grusbeck, we have updates from you regarding all kinds of matters here.
Yeah, I don't, you have the report, and I won't go into detail about, too much detail about what I've, what I've written. I'll mention a couple of things off-script real quick. There is on Chatham Street, some repair work that we're doing on a failing culvert, a long-time failing culvert. In fact, I think it's got mentioned here at the board a few times, on the bottom of Chatham Street, near Southern Spesens.
Yeah, it's at the bottom, yeah.
Yeah.
The cement plant.
Floods out, we're repairing culvert, in the hopes that it will stop flooding out, so then we can make more substantial repairs due to gas, so that's what's happening there. Traffic will be restricted a little bit. While that's going on, I believe they started today, and we're going to probably work through tomorrow as well. In Chatham Forest, we're replacing a PRD, pressure-reducing valve on Chatham Forest Drive, disallow Chatham Forest Drive. A couple people along the way, I don't think as far up as we're currently at, but a couple people along the way are going to be without water, and I believe we've notified them, and that's going to start tomorrow, it should be done by the end of the day. And if it's not, we'll, we'll keep folks posted on that. The Sanford Forest Main, we keep, we keep meeting with Davenport, Wooton, and Chatham Park on that, to finalize an agreement with Chatham Park on the guarantee of financing. We'll have a kickoff meeting next week with Wooton for major design work, I believe has already started on some easement identification and some of the right-of-way work that is going to be necessary for the forest main. The, you'll see the, a lot of this whole thing, they come up up here. That's weird. But you have in your report, you see, if you can just imagine that being-
Oh.
There we go. Sorry about that. So, the kiosk went up, if you haven't seen it, the first kiosk went up in the front of Page Vernon Park. I think it's almost scary how easy it went in. It was Friday or two ago, went up before the end of the afternoon. We have a few things up on it already. It, it seems to be innocuous enough that we didn't, as strange as this sounds, we didn't get any complaints about it. So, I was kind of worried that, because when we were out there sizing it up, I was kind of worried that it might, that it might be in the way of people walking or biking. Anyway, it's up, and I believe we're waiting on word from the business owners, I'm worried with the other two. Since we have that, we can put those others up both days. And then the only other thing I'd mention is, stay tuned for the budget, we'll be, we're still, I think, on track to submit that to you by, on the May 8. So, please, put an agreement on the budget, that will be the discussion. With that, I'll, I'll tap out. Any questions?
Any questions for Ryan Grusbeck? We have a number of items in your package for GAWA's consideration, fiscal policy from Heather Meacham, additional materials about 14 dioxide in Cape Fear Basin, and reports from the Chatham County Housing Committee. So, that would then bring us to Commissioner Condon, Jay Barrow. I'm sorry about that.
Before you go, I have a question.
Okay, good. Okay.
Fair enough.
Very good, thank you.
I don't have any, but I hate to stop.
I just had a constituent contact me, he said he was riding by the new agricultural center, and I guess the Chatham County crew was out there pulling up weeds and cutting grass, and he said they took all those weeds and grass stuff and stuffed it in the storm bridge.
Oh, no.
So, we need to make sure that they will not do that kind of shit.
Okay, if I don't have any.
Back to you.
Yeah, I saw, I had concerns coming to the meeting until I was driving here. On Oak Road Street, right downtown, there, we have our electrical conduits, and a little pipe, metal pipe, in the gutter, the curb gutter. And, yeah, and there's a piece of it that is bent, and probably a tripping hazard, something that snagged on something and is going to pull up. So, it's, it's deformed and life is fairly dangerous. Some tripping hazard, I didn't see any exposed wires, so I think it's still in that area. Another thing I'll mention is this fiscal policy that says, we will review this in two weeks, I find to be very helpful, having two weeks left. So, any other things we can do this in the future? Yeah? I think we're-
We've done that sort of thing in the past, where if we can have a policy, we'll put it in advance, and you guys can mark it up, or choose not to read it until that night, and then comment on it that night. Whatever, you do have it a couple weeks early.
I've had a team nick something at the dam, and I was sitting there watching the dam, and I noticed that the structure, there are two places where there are waters. Seems like mighty something, they've been like that for a lot of times, like, is it a cost person? Or? I didn't know.
And Oliver is not able to speak sufficiently well, even though she did have concerns, so we'll, we'll address her at a later time, although we've heard a report on, on before the, now. John Vonnell?
Yes. I want to thank you, Mr. Grusbeck, for sending the packets on Thursday night, and that was very helpful, and so, I just really appreciate it when we can get it on Thursdays. It would have been more ideal if we could get it earlier in the evening. My wife gets scared when Elio's step onto the porch late at night.
There's an empty neighbor.
I'm sorry. But, two small kids, she, her heart races when she hears footsteps after, when we're expecting visitors. But, thank you again for putting that on Thursday, that was very helpful. And- That's it for me.
All right. Oh, just nothing, okay, I'll enter to the emergency room. Move by Mike Fiocca, second by Jay Barrow. Second, David.
Aye.